Okay, we have her. Actually, I believe, is that you Julie on the audio right now?
She held up a message, I believe it said, "I need a participant ID." Julie, can you hold it up again? Yeah, she needs a participant ID.
Okay, I did follow that information.
I need a participant ID, so... Otherwise, it only lets me in as an attendee. That's her message.
Julie, we have you on as your phone shows on, but it shows mute. We have you on our screen as on, but it shows mute. Can you unmute it Judy and see if that works?
I'm trying right now.
Did you send her that participant ID?
I sent her all the information that, yeah, normally goes out.
Okay.
Am I unmuted now?
Yes.
Okay. Okay, we've got you. Okay. All right, I guess we can go ahead and proceed then. Well, next, now the next item is approval of the agenda. And as I said before, there was a, there's been a recommendation by city to dismiss the, to item G1, the business license revocation appeal. We could remove it from the agenda, or we could leave it there. I believe the city attorney might have some comments to make about that.
Yeah, I was going to explain the reason why it would be, we'd be requesting you to basically just dismiss the appeal. And we could do it when it's on the agenda, or I could do it now, whatever you prefer.
All right, with counsel, I would just leave the agenda as is. Okay, do we have a motion to approve the agenda?
I'll move to approve the agenda as written.
I'll second.
All in favor of approve the agenda, say aye. Aye. Motion passes unanimously. Thank you. Okay, now we have public comment on non-agenda items. Judy, do we have anyone wishing, in the audience wishing to speak?
Yes, Mayor, we just had one hand go up. Did you want to give your...
All right, okay, all right, this is the time of the meeting when we allow public comment on non-agenda items. We asked that the speaker identify themselves and provide the address so that the city attorney, city clerk has their contact information. We would ask that you limit your comments to three minutes or less. And with that, and typically, we do not respond to comments that are made during this portion of the meeting. Okay, so if you could bring that person in?
Yes, and so the first hand that went up was Mindy Gasparic. And I don't know if I got that name pronunciation correct or not, but... Hang on, I'm not sure what happened here, give me just a moment. Some still weird stuff.
Hi there, this is Mindy Gasparic. I assume you could hear me okay. I'm at 8 Amethyst Avenue. And I've seen a couple of comments on Facebook of people who would like to attend the meetings, but they don't do Zoom for whatever reason. So, and I think there is a way to stream a Zoom meeting or a webinar on the Facebook page. I'm not 100% sure, but I just wanted to mention that and see if that's something that you guys would consider. Just to give more people more access to the meeting. But that was all, thank you very much.
Your comments, thank you. Judy, do we have anyone else?
No, Mayor, that was the only hand that went up.
Okay, all right, in that case, we'll move on to the next item, the consent calendar. We have three items, the approval of the meeting minutes for the July 7th, the July 21st, and the August 4th meeting. Counselor Wolf?
Hi, I'd like to pull the July 7th meeting minutes off the consent calendar, please.
Motion to approve the other two items as part of the consent calendar. Mayor Protam?
Yes, I'd like to make one small change to the August 4th, so we could pull it or do it now, whichever.
I think we should pull it and do it now Nancy, and Julie, is there, you're pulling it because I just need to know the reason. Is it, you haven't had time to look at it, or?
I just have one correction.
It's just a procedural thing.
Yeah, Julie, what's, what's your point?
I just have one proposed correction, Susan, it's a quickie.
Can we do that tonight, or does it need to be pulled? That's my procedural question, that's all.
Oh no, I just wanted to be, we can do it tonight, I just want it to be moved off the consent calendar so we can talk about it.
The normal process is any council member can pull one off the consent calendar. You'll just do it afterwards, and you can consider whether or not to approve it at that point.
So, we have, we have requests to pull July 7th and August 4th, so as a practical matter, consent calendar amounts now to approving the July 21st meeting minutes. So would we, and Counselor Wolf?
I moved.
Okay, do we have a second?
Second.
Okay, we have a motion as second to approve the consent calendar, which consists only of approving the July 21st meeting minutes. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Motion passes unanimously. All right, thank you. So the next item we'll consider will be approval of the July 7th regular meeting minutes. Counselor Wolf, you had a concern?
Thank you. Under the section regarding ordinance 1120, the sentence that talked about my statement didn't make sense to me, but I'd like to read what I think I said, or what I think I meant, if I may. I'd like to change that one sentence to say that Julie Wolf would like to note for the record that none of the objections to extending, to extending the store hours were based on any reports of any problems caused by the businesses.
Does anyone need to compare that against the, the minutes as they're presently written? Or do we have a good enough understanding?
Do you want me to read what it says now?
Yeah, could you, could you do that Julie, and then, and if, again, if you would read, so we know what the difference is?
Yes.
Mayor, I've got it, if I can read the, the section, if you'd like.
Sure.
Okay, okay, yeah, why don't you go ahead and do that Julie, Judy?
That little paragraph says Counselor Wolf would like to note for the record that none of the objections were based on any reports on what the businesses have done.
Okay, and then, and then Julie, your correction would be, could you state that again, please?
Julie Wolf would like to note for the record that none of the objections to extending the store hours were based on any reports of problems caused by the businesses.
Okay. And is that, that the only modification you are requesting?
Yeah.
Do any members of council have thoughts on that, or?
It makes sense to me.
Okay.
Can we just move to approve them now? With that change?
Yeah, if there are no objections, do I have a motion to approve as corrected?
So I move, we approve the July 7th, 2020 regular meeting minutes, making the change that Counselor Wolf just suggested.
Do we have a second?
I'll second that.
We have a second by Counselor Munchada? Okay, great. Let's go ahead and vote then, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Okay, it's unanimous, thank you. Very good, the next item would be the approval of the August 4th regular meeting minutes. I'm sorry, who had the concern?
That was me, and on paragraph H dash 1, or H point 1, I'm just looking to see what page it's on now. I thought that it was confusing, and it was a motion that I made. So I wanted to say approve ordinance 1320, condition upon our city attorney providing language to allow Manitou City to approve signage by sponsors.
Nancy?
Yeah.
Can you, can you say again where it defines that?
Yes, it's on page 3, page 3 of the August 14th, August 4th minutes, paragraph H point 1. It said, Mayor Protam Fortune motion to approve ordinance number 1320 with the consideration that the attorney will look at the language for second reading of the ordinance. And I wanted to change that to a condition, approve 1320 conditioned upon attorney providing language that would allow Manitou, the city of Manitou to approve signage by sponsors.
Oh, I remember that.
Mayor Protam, is that your only recommendation?
That is, thank you.
Okay. Is anyone opposed to that?
No.
Okay, okay, so, all in favor of approving the minutes as amended with the recommendation of Mayor Protam Fortune?
It needs, it needs a second, so I'll second that.
Okay, good, thank you Counselor Chandler, that's a good point. Okay, all in favor, say aye. Aye. Okay, great, motion passes unanimously. Okay, thank you very much. Okay, so, next item is item G1 hearings. We've come to the appeal of business license revocation Pike's Peak RV Park. As I mentioned, Mayor, excuse me, Denise?
Judith, can you pull Mindy back over to attendee instead of, thank you. Okay, sorry, go ahead.
Okay, great, okay, so, so this is the appeal of the business license revocation item. I believe, well, city staff has recommended that we dismiss this. I believe Mr. Parker has some background information he can provide to us.
Yeah, I can do that, Mayor, thank you. Really briefly, on July 6th, the city's finance director revoked the business license of the Pike's Peak RV Park. Revocation was based upon a number of perceived violations at the park. The RV Park appeal, which basically stays the effect of the revocation of the business license, which allows them to continue to operate until there's an appeal hearing. During the period of time between the revocation and tonight, I met with the, or spoke with the attorney for the RV Park, city staff met with the owner of the RV Park. They worked out what was needed to happen to basically remedy all the violations upon which the revocation was based. They had a site visit out there on Friday. I think there's some additional conversations yesterday. And all of the violations that the revocation was based upon have been completely remedied now. So, city staff is asking for the city council to just approve dismissing the appeal subject to the city's finance director withdrawing the revocation because the park is now back into compliance. So, rather than having a 45-minute hearing, we hope to get this resolved ahead of time, and it looks like it has been resolved. So, because it's been, it's in front of you, it's in your jurisdiction, we wanted to make sure that you actually approve that withdrawal of the appeal based upon the withdrawal of the revocation. And as a note, the attorney for the RV Park, I believe, is attending the meeting. I told him that if city council had any questions, or he wanted to say anything, he could have a chance to do that. But unless city council has any major concerns, I was hopeful you'd just basically approve the dismissal of the appeal, and we'd save some time tonight.
Judith?
So, I have a couple of questions. So there were a number of violations over quite an extensive period of time that tied up staff, in particular Kai Cushionberry, for some time. And I want some assurances that 100% of the issues have been resolved. Not 10%, not 20, not 50, not 75, that they have been resolved. Or are you telling me they're in the process of being resolved? And if so, I'd be uncomfortable unless I knew which specific issues are still needing to be addressed and what the drop dead date is for getting those things addressed.
Yeah, no, that's a good question. So, my initial thought was they would not be able to resolve everything, and we'd be asking you for continuance for a reasonable period of time to allow them to do that if they'd agreed to do that. But staff has informed me that they are all resolved now. There's nothing more to be done for the violations upon which the current revocation was based.
Thank you, this is a question for Jeff also. So do I understand correctly, just kind of by implication, that currently our code has no fines or anything for the fact of the violation? The only time we can actually find someone, the only remedy we have is to revoke their business license? But are, are there also fines that we're entitled to impose?
Yeah, so, as far, as far as this appeals process is concerned, this is just dealing with the business license revocation. So, you would basically be deciding whether or not the license was revoked on legitimate grounds. But they can also be cited into municipal court for violations because there's code violations, and they were. So they attended municipal court this morning, and the prosecutor had basically agreed to dismiss the charges based upon them coming into compliance. So, depending upon, you know, the issues that we're dealing with, there's prosecutorial discretion based upon how severe the offenses are. So, you know, a violation can be fined. But in some cases, when the owner actually comes into compliance, the court case can get dismissed. That's what happened this morning, I've been informed.
And Jeff, do you have, do you happen to know offhand what the fine is, or how that works?
So, I believe, I don't, there are a number of violations, and each one may be subject to different fines. But I believe some of them are subject to the general penalty provisions that are in your code, which is a fine of up to $26.50 per violation. So the fines can be substantial, but I'd have to, I didn't do the analysis to look at each violation and which, which ones have which fines. So ultimately, they could have been significant.
It's interesting that they've been out of compliance for so long. I don't know if that means for the last three years, or, or what that means, but have we ever fined them ever, other than this morning, when the judge dismissed it?
I don't believe they've ever been brought to municipal court before.
Mayor Protam Fortune, you have a comment?
Is that a decision that is made by staff, whether to proceed with the fine, or who makes that decision, just from my own education?
Well, ultimately, the prosecutor of the court would basically make a prosecutorial decision. But that would be based upon input from staff, and then the judge has to approve it and find that it's a just, you know, a just resolution.
So does that mean, does that mean the only time that we can actually find a business that's out of compliance is if some member of staff decides to discuss it with the prosecutor? Is that the process in our code?
Um, no, I think the prosecutor has, there's, they'll get cases brought to them, and the prosecutor will decide.
I, I'm not talking about prosecutorial discretion. I'm talking about the fact that the prosecutor presumably is unaware of which, if any, businesses in town may be out of compliance with their, with our code. So, I'm just trying to figure out, how does the matter first get to the attention of the prosecutor? How does the person even get fined in the first place? Is that just something that some staff member has the authority to do, or does council have that authority, or how does that work?
So I think it can work in a number of ways. I think a lot of the violations that are, that are basically brought to court are either filed by the police department, or they're filed by code enforcement based upon staff review and staff direction. So, when staff sees a, sees a violation that they think is severe enough to go to court and they can't get it resolved. Usually staff will try and resolve something like this informally. But ultimately, what goes to the prosecutor goes through a citation process, which is staff, the administrator, or the police department basically issuing a citation.
Mayor Protam, you have the floor?
Yeah, thank you. In direct response to both Julie and Judith, I, it's my understanding that this is the first time that the city has ever revoked a license. And it's also my understanding that there are potentially some more in the pipeline for, for strict action. I would like to encourage staff as a council to create a culture of enforcement. Not total enforcement, I think the code enforcement officer still needs some discretion in applying it. But I don't think we've had that culture of enforcement enforcing our laws to date. And I think now we have a staff who is willing to do that, you know, and stopping this habit that I've seen over and over again on both planning commission and on council to, you know, for people asking forgiveness rather than permission. We have laws in place, we need to, we need to follow our own laws. So, I would be more than willing to withdraw this, this from our hearing tonight. But I would like to continue to encourage staff, again, to create that culture of enforcement, thank you. So I couldn't have said it better than Mayor Protam Fortune, she said exactly what I was going to say. And we do, and I just want to say it again, though, because there's a property in my neighborhood, and this particular property has been allowed to have multiple code violations. And when I went to get my, you know, when I'm going to get my permit to do things, I have to follow the letter of the law, or I'm in trouble. And I, of course, I would do that. But my, my concern about this case, as a test case, is this particular owner has violated multiple codes. Then he gets a permit after the fact. And he, then he, so, so I want to make sure that staff, and especially planning, that we develop a culture where you don't get to do something and then get a permit afterwards without getting a significant fine. And again, he's done this multiple times, and, and it's not the only case in this town. And, and I personally, I'm getting tired of it as well. So I'm glad that this came up, and I think it's just another teachable moment, but we need to do a code rewrite. So, so there aren't certain people that get away with everything, and those of us who don't, as residents in particular, we follow the letter of the law, and, and it's just not right. So, that's what I have to say, thanks.
To Wolberg?
Yes, I agree with everything that's been said, I just want to wrap in. We got some council correspondence that very much echoes for comments that are being made here by council tonight. This was, you know, these documents went out as part of the agenda packet, and our residents have now read and seen what happened and how many offenses were, were done by this one business, and how long it took. And that's, you know, alarming to some, and some may think, well, there aren't really any consequences, I can do it, and if I don't get caught, great. And if I do get caught, there's not even a fine, I just go get my permit and pay my use tax afterwards. So, I'm repeating some things, but I just wanted to thank the people who reached out to us via council correspondence. And obviously, you can tell that council has read your correspondence and has worked those comments in tonight. I think this being part of the public record, and the public being able to really see this is going to require that we step up our game and consider this and start doing a little bit more to make sure that the rules are followed for sure. And I guess, I could also say start doing a lot more. But we, we need to move forward with this, and I agree with the other council members, thank you.
Thank you. Counselor Bremner? Steve?
Yes, I'd like to say I received some correspondence as well, directed specifically. And the person mentioned that there's been, this has been ongoing for a long time, and he, he recommended that there be some sort of penalty. He also referenced other properties that he has where he's also in violation. So it's not just this one property, I'm not sure what all is involved, but just bringing that out there, that's all.
Counselor Wolf, you have a comment?
I just wanted to briefly say I completely agree, and the way that Nancy described the situation is exactly how I feel. And I also think, it may be a little tricky going forward, because if I recall, since the enforcement, for code enforcement is now under the wing of the police department, and then if Kai has given his notice, or is gone already, I'm not even sure. So I just want to make sure that there's some, in the interim here, that there's someone who will take the lead in enforcing our building codes. Because the sense I get is that if you're a fairly wealthy business, the, the city won't do anything other than maybe encouraging you to come into compliance. And it's more the little, you know, homeowner who's out of compliance because they used vinyl windows on their historic home instead of wood, and they're the ones that get taken to the cleaners. So I think it makes it look more fair when the city is willing to go after businesses, including big businesses, instead of just, you know, the average Joe. So I'm very encouraged by this, that's all.
Thank you. Denise, I think you had your hand up, and then Mayor Protam?
Christine would like to come over and say a few comments from the planning department, so if we could bring Christine over?
Okay.
Hi, good evening.
Hello.
Hi, thank you. I think there's a couple of items that I think might, it might be worth it just to take a moment to address some of these. There was a question asked earlier, I believe Counselor Wolf, you, you alluded to, how does, how does the court get involved in a situation like this? In this particular case, the way the court got involved was that after repeated letters and communications, as you can see from the history, not going on, on, how should I say this? Properly, they were not properly addressed. We made the decision to cite Mr. Guzman as the owner of the business for repeated violations and repeatedly ignoring our request for communication and coming into compliance. That's how we came to court. So that particular matter was about him as a business owner. And then this is also, what's before you is in relationship to the business license. So it was a parallel path that was being followed. And as you can see, there was a history there, so that is why we were, we were a bit tough there. With regard to big fish versus small fish, I think that that was a very appropriate analogy. And it is, it is easy to just go talk to a homeowner, right? Just Mr. and Mrs. Smith who lives on the corner to say, hey, your sidewalks don't match the history. the historical district or your roof isn't appropriate or, you know, whatever. It is very, very easy to do that, right? You know that from planning commission, Counselor Wolf. Now, um, as you did comment, it is difficult to go after the larger businesses. There has been, um, it is, as you can see, this is approximately two and a half years in the making and in with changes in senior staff, it can make it very difficult for staff that was here to be able to consistently build the case, go after the case and then stick with it when it came to city council. So um, I think now, as was stated a couple of times earlier, that there is, there is an alignment um and a will that we're feeling and we're being told very clearly by the community that we need to address these and we need to enforce. Sometimes it is easier said than done and for um the history that we have, sometimes we have to do a little bit to overcome that. So um, I hear that and um, um, Counselor Chandler, your point was taken and we are, as you know, are working through that, you know, we were just, just emailing a moment ago about that. The other item that I wanted to address just, just quickly, and this is not so much about this particular matter, but about um Kai Cushionberry's resignation. It, it does change, um, it, I shouldn't say change, it does um cause us to take a moment of pause in how we'll move forward. Not in that we'll pause any action or in monitoring what's happening in the community or writing letters or any of these activities, but we do have to consider how we move forward. The benefit of the code enforcement officer being in the police department has been that there is a little bit more strength to a code enforcement officer walking up to a business that's in violation than was before. Even if it isn't necessarily the case, even if that wasn't the case before, there is a perceived um strength there. And um Kai is able, has been able to have police officers back him up or go buy a property and check out a situation that is a code enforcement issue. It's not a legal matter, it's more of a civil matter. But I don't think that we'll see, we'll see too many hiccups over the next few weeks. We have been working on the staff side um between the planning staff, the police department staff, um, and administration in looking at what does this mean over the next six to eight weeks.
Denise, hopeful background. Mayor Protem was next.
Yeah, I wanted, I wanted to move to um approve the withdrawal of the license revocation based on staff input and the fact that the um, uh, the appeal person, the appellant has remediated, is now in compliance with code.
Do we have a second?
Okay.
Counselor Wolf makes a second. Call for further discussion. I believe Counselor Chandler had raised her hand.
Yes, I, I just wanted to say one thing and uh in uh response to Ms. Lowenberg and she and I have had some, a number of discussions on this, in this very vein. Um, Ms. Lowenberg, you said that you were tough on this guy, that he, that you were tough on him. I, I'm going to go out on a limb and say um, he had zero consequences over a two and a half year period and he uh very artfully worked the system as many developers, I think, do and certainly in the case in our neighborhood, they know how to get around things. And I don't think we were tough on him at all. I think he got away scot-free and here's another individual that doesn't live here. I believe he lives in Aurora or some other town. And um, and I, you know, you and I had a conversation and I, I do believe I can quote you saying, um, fair is fair. And fair is fair and fair needs to be fair for all businesses and all residences and it has to be equal and fair across the board because we were not tough on this guy and this is why he repeatedly violated uh municipal codes seriously and got his permits afterwards when he, when he felt like it. And so I want to put, I put Mr. Guzman on notice, all the developers and let the residents know that um rules apply to everyone in this town. It's time we do a code rewrite and we enforce, um, we enforce our code.
Counselor Wolberg?
Uh, was Mayor Protem before me?
I already spoke, I, I did a motion.
Sure, sure, sure. Okay, we have a motion and a second to dismiss the uh, the item from the agenda. Counselor Wolberg, your comments.
Thank you. Part of the discussion, I would say that Christine hasn't been here that long and I do think that she was tough in this moment. And I just have to say that because she's the one who moved us to where we were along with Kai, where this was actually going to be revoked. And as I thought I heard her say earlier, this is the first time we've threatened to revoke it. So it bothers me just a little bit to say that Christine, call her out and specifically say she wasn't tough when she's the first revocation we've had in one of these moments. And I think that we don't want to tamp that down or discourage that tonight because she, I don't remember what her start date was, but given some time to start up and get familiar with this, this action is the first action I've seen like this in 18 years that I've lived here. So let's not, I just, that bothers me and I'm, I'm sorry Counselor Chandler, but I just feel that she was tough on this issue. Um, and I agree, we haven't been tough on it before. So I both agree with you and I, and I take issue with saying that she didn't, wasn't tough and didn't make something happen.
Thank you. Christine, I believe you.
I'd like to respond to that just because of my.
Excuse me. Counselor Chandler, Christine also had her hand up uh when I called in Counselor Wolberg. So we'll do Christine, then we'll come to you, Judith.
Thank you.
Christine, do you want to respond now or?
Sure, absolutely. Um, one of the challenges we had with this particular property was that, was the complexity of it. And I do want to, Denise, I spoke about this earlier and thought that if it was appropriate to mention it, we should mention it. You know, while this is a no more than seven day a week RV park, there had been some folks who had been there longer than seven days. One of the challenges we faced specifically in this particular instance is that if we went all the way through and we revoke the business license is not, it isn't, it isn't our interest in that it, it satisfies our need for, for, for justice or whatever we want, whatever word we want to use there, um, compliance. But if he could bring it into compliance, then those people who have been there more than seven days would not be looking for a new place to park their home, if you will. Now, this, this, um, this engagement around the business license revocation continued all the way through this morning, just before, like literally as court was beginning. Um, we were prepared to offer to those folks who were there and would need um a place to go in the event that the business license revocation was fully executed and the park was closed, we would assist them in finding a new place to go. We were, I was, Kai Cushionberry and I, all the way up until this morning, were busy working with inspectors over at Pike's Peak Regional Building who actually went and looked at the electrical and were able to verify that those specific violations that we stated in this letter that were caused for business license revocation had been not only um addressed from a cosmetic perspective, but were also safely done. We were very concerned that electrical lines and sewer lines can easily be capped. So we needed to verify that. And there was also another alternative that um this particular business could have undertaken and, and chose not to, which was to um, to seek a conditional use permit for the property. When they bought the property, it had an existing non-conforming use, which is an RV park, which is not permitted in the city of Manitou Springs. And so when Mr. Guzman bought the property, it came with that. So he was faced with returning the property to its pre-modification state or seeking a conditional use permit. And because of the issues with those residents, residents um who were at the park, we needed to allow some flexibility there. So um, I did want to, I did want to address that. I thought that was important to share that because yes, there are going to be additional instances um around town that we have been asked, the city has been asked to pursue and we are in the process of pursuing those and there are residents. And given this time um with the economy, the way it is, and for some folks, it's a dire situation, we have to proceed somewhat delicately and always keep not just the city's interests in mind, but those individuals. So you, you will see some more um communication and actions over the coming months, but our goal is to always try to resolve, um, resolve it so no one ends up on the street. So thank you, thank you for letting me share that.
Chandler?
Uh, so thank you, Counselor Wolberg. You brought up some really important issues and I, and I hear you and I, I really did not mean to single out Christine Lowenberg personally. And uh, and I certainly apologize if that was the, the tone that I set, I take responsibility for that. It just, that, this particular issue is an extremely hotbed issue and just today, as a matter of fact, I emailed Christine some information and I had a neighbor come to my house and uh complained to me that um this particular project that's going up on Becker's Lane, they're violating the AM noise ordinance and they did so this morning. And I, and I encouraged her to uh, to call code enforcement and her response to me, and I quote, is, why? I've called before and nothing happens. And it just kind of made me sad that um I, in fact, she and her husband, uh, my neighbors are now moving, they're moving out of state now. They hope to stay here forever, but um are, are moving on um for, and these are some of the reasons. And so I, I just, I do certainly apologize. I, I, I do get that you uh did more than anyone else has done. The, the problem is, is the culture that we come into has been one of um people believing they can get away with things and um, and um, and they do, and they have in the past. So I'm grateful, grateful that there's going to be a change in the culture and um, and I do appreciate everything that the planning department is, is doing and I think this is a really great test case. I, I hope we don't have to see these multiple repeated violations again before um appropriate action is taken. Thank you.
Further discussion, we have a motion in a second to dismiss this item from tonight's agenda. Wait, any further comments or are we ready for a vote?
Mayor, may I just say a comment?
Yes, Denise, please.
I just want to say that we heard from council, we heard you, we heard your direction. Again, COVID-19 was another issue with this one uh that delayed a, a little bit in a few things that were happening with the COVID-19. So uh, and it is the first license ever revoked or a letter ever sent. So we are moving in that direction. We've made that decision, we're moving and I believe that there could be several more coming your way. So we've heard you.
Great, thank you Denise.
Mayor?
Judith?
Did you have a hand go up in the audience? Information.
If we were entertaining a public hearing tonight, or a hearing, we would not be entertaining uh public comments tonight. I believe that's correct, Mr. Parker?
Yeah, the only issue, it might, might be the attorney for the Pike's Peak RV Park. I, I did tell him that, you know, council might have questions for him or you, you might have something to say.
Okay.
It is attorney.
Sure. Is there attorney?
It is the attorney.
Okay, then I, I guess I'd recommend that we give him an opportunity briefly to speak. So Judy, could you bring him in?
Okay.
Am I here?
Yes.
Yes, if you could identify yourself, please, and give us your address.
Absolutely. Thank you, Mayor Graham, members of council. My name is Stephen Harris. I am an attorney with Albern Meyer Stewart LLC. Did you say you need my address as well?
Yeah, your office address would be okay.
It's 14 North Sierra Madre Street, Colorado Springs, 80903. I will be very brief, but thank you very much for the opportunity to speak. Um, I know this has been a long ordeal for everyone involved. I have only been involved recently, uh, but I have to say that uh, working with the city staff and my client and the city attorney, um, there was, it was a good uh working relationship. I'm not going to address any of the things that have gone on in the past, uh, but my client has in fact moved to uh the property. He's now living here in Manitou Springs. He wishes to be involved in the community. He wants to be a good member of the community and uh we're just happy that we were able to work this out. Um, he understands all of the restrictions on the property and I just wanted to make you aware of that. So thank you for the opportunity to speak and if you have any questions, I'd be happy to take them.
For Mr. Harris? Apparently not. It looks like we're ready for a vote, so the um motion is to uh remove the appeal of business license revocation uh from tonight's agenda, basically to dismiss it. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye? Motion passes unanimously. Thank you. And Christine, I want to thank you and his staff and Mr. Parker for the work that you did. You know, I guess out of the two and a half years that this has been a, a problem, it's really, Christine, you've just been here since the end of February, so I think we're stepping forward, making progress and it looks like there's a new sheriff in town, so let the world take notice. Thank you. Um, next item, item G2, second reading and public hearing of ordinance number 1220, an ordinance amending the annual budget for fiscal year 2020. I believe Becca Davis is going to bring us up to date.
Good evening, oops. Okay.
Hi, Becca.
Hey, good evening. So this is the second reading and uh first I have to address the fact that it was brought to my attention that the table of contents was uh really odd looking because there were missing parts of page numbers, like for instance, the fire department instead of saying 40 was zero. I, I had a weird glitch going on with my Adobe PDF writer and I believe I've gotten it fixed now. So uh, and unfortunately I'd made, I had set that up as the very last thing, saved it, looked good, loaded it up, never realized that my save hadn't, it, it acted weird. So hopefully that will not be an issue in the future and I will try to make sure, improve read and make sure that it looks correct uh after having found out the hard way that it wasn't correct. So this is the same amended fund, amended budget that was presented before, except for one thing, and that is that there had been 50,000 in the capital improvements fund for the fire department to repair their driveway. And it was in 2019, it wasn't done in 2019. And so now at the budget amendment time, that 50,000 was brought forward into 2020 so they could start those repairs. Other than that, the ending general fund, unassigned fund balance is as of this amendment, uh, a million, 954,0225 dollars.
Becca, the change in vernacular, the para.
Oh, yes. Oh, with the one other thing was, we've taken the word uh paramilitary out of the fire department, speaking of page 40, out of the fire department uh description. So now it just says, this is an organization that is split in, you know, two different facets. One is the volunteers and the other is the six-page staff. So any questions?
Um, I can't find which page I saw this on, so uh, correct me if I'm incorrect, but I have in my notes that there was something about parking revenue and for the amended budget 2020. And I, I couldn't tell if that assumes that the bar law fee will stay the same and that hywathalot will stay free. Is that what those, are those two assumptions, what that, what that was based on with your projection?
Right. What I did was um, I assumed that co, that the COVID-19 is going to significantly impact our parking and I wasn't aware of any other changes at the time that I, that I put in these numbers. So basically I just took the revenues and cut them in half because I didn't want us to overestimate what was going to come in.
Okay, thank you. That's, that's my only question.
Okay.
I will say the parking right now is looking better than anticipated, right Becca, where we're looking at that monthly by month by month, it's looking better, but we didn't add that to the amended budget at this time.
Right. My concern is if all of a sudden uh we. Right. My concern is if all of a sudden we have a very bad fall, a very bad autumn, and we have to all go back to sheltering in place. I didn't want to get too confident that, hey, everything's looking better than we originally thought. Let's go ahead and raise those revenues. And then boom, we're, we're back, we're back to stage one. So, I just left it where it was with those cuts.
Additional questions for Becca? Two weeks ago, this wasn't terribly controversial either. So, I guess, I guess we feel like we have a decent understanding of the, the budget and the work that's been done and confidence in our staff. We entertain a motion to, oh, excuse me, the second reading, this, we should include a public hearing now. My apologies. I'm not doing very well tonight. So, I will declare the public hearing open and entertain, we should entertain comments from the public. Judy, do we have anyone?
I'm looking. So far, no hands have gone up. So, if anyone on the, who's attending would like to speak to this public hearing, please use the raised hand tool.
We have 19 attendees.
Still no hands.
No hands? Okay. And based on the excitement that this had two weeks ago, I think probably that's what we're going to see, no, no public comment. So, I will declare the public hearing closed. And there's no further discussion, entertain a motion. Mayor Protem?
Sure. I'll move to approve ordinance number 1220, ordinance amending the annual budget for fiscal year 2020 with the changes made by Becca tonight, specifically the table of contents numbering and the removal of the word paramilitary.
Second?
Any further discussion? If not, let's vote. All in favor, say aye. Aye? Motion, Mr. Shada? I'm sorry, I didn't. Aye, okay, all, all, passes unanimously. Thank you. Okay, great. Becca, thank you very much.
Thank you.
Okay, item G3. This is Second Reading and Public Hearing of Ordinance Number 1320, Amending Title V and Title 18 of the Manitou Springs Municipal Code to enact regulations pertaining to micro-mobility share services in micro-mobility businesses or operations and providing penalties for violations. And information will be presented by Christine and Dylan from planning. Christine, welcome back.
Hello. I had a moment to grab a cup of hot tea, so it was lovely. I think Dylan will, yep, there's Dylan. So, I will let Dylan introduce this. He's been working diligently on this, as all of you know. So, we'll go ahead and let him introduce it as well, as well as a couple of nuances and items that we identified over the last two weeks that might be worth some discussion. So, go ahead, Dylan.
Good evening, councilors. I'm here tonight to present ordinance 1320 for second reading regarding micro-mobility and micro-mobility share operations. The amendments recommended during first reading have been incorporated into the draft tonight. The advertising section, which was 1891050C, has been amended per the language recommended by the city attorney. It now states, under number one there, it states, "The advertisement is for the micro-mobility share operator or operation itself or a city-approved sponsor subject to the city guidelines concerning sponsorship eligibility." Number two, the advertisement is for the city of Manitou Springs itself or a city-approved sponsor subject to city guidelines concerning sponsorship eligibility. So, there's a little change in the language there. Currently, the city attorney is working on those sponsorship eligibility guidelines. As far as the, the fees for the micro-mobility application, that'll be discussed on the next item on the agenda. And the only other amendment, should the councilors choose to include it in their, in their motion tonight, would be to include the Creek Walk Trail in the list under Section 1891070C regarding the geo-fencing. That's where it lists all of the, the streets, basically where it's permitted for operation. And if that amendment is included in the motion tonight, it'll also require an update of ordinance 0818, which allows e-bikes on the Creek Walk Trail. Currently, it only allows Class 1 e-bikes. It'll have to be updated to include Class 2 e-bikes as well, which is, Class 1 and 2 are included for operation in this micro-mobility ordinance. So, that's why it would require the update on the Creek Walk ordinance as well. Other than that, thank you for your time tonight and consideration of these regulations. And I'm happy to answer any questions.
Questions for Dylan? Counselor Wolf?
Thank you. I, I might have missed it, but Dylan, you're saying that you think we should change number 13 to Creek Walk Trail or whatever it's called, Creek Walk something? And then move number 13 to 14? Is that what you're saying?
In the actual ordinance?
Yeah, under, I think you cited 819107013. And that's subsection C, and that's where you have all the streets you're allowed to be on with these vehicles. You're saying you want to add number 13 as Creek Walk Trail?
That if, if the council would like to add Creek Walk Trail to that list, then yes. That Creek Walk would become number 13 and what is number 13 would then be 14. And it would also-
Go ahead.
It would also require an update to ordinance 0818, which is, allows e-bikes on Creek Walk Trail. It only allows Class 1. And so it'll have to be updated to also include Class 2 as well.
And can you help us understand why staff is suggesting that we add Creek Walk Trail? If it is suggesting, I'm not sure if staff has a position on this and if so, what's your position and why?
Staff doesn't really have a position on it. But I did receive an email from administration asking questions about including Creek Walk in this ordinance. So, we wanted to allow that opportunity for the council to decide if they wanted to include that.
Matt, can I make a quick comment?
Okay.
Thank you. So, right now, your current code does allow Class 1 e-bikes on the Creek Walk Trail. And so, it's a little, I think it could be a little bit confusing if, with the language currently in 1891070, that basically indicates that the e-bikes from a rental service are not allowed on the Creek Walk Trail. It's kind of the way it reads right now. So, the rental bikes, Class 1, wouldn't be on the Creek Walk Trail, whereas anybody else could ride their e-bike, Class 1 e-bike on the Creek Walk Trail. So, I think you have two things to consider. I mean, my suggestion was, well, why don't we allow the rental ones on the Creek Walk Trail, just like everybody else is allowed to be on there with Class 1 bike? And then the next question is, well, do you want to upgrade that to allow Class 2 e-bikes as well? Because the rental companies are allowed to basically offer Class 2 e-bikes as well as Class 1 e-bikes. It just didn't seem to make a lot of sense to have a different rule for e-bikes that are rental e-bikes than are currently allowed. So, one suggestion would be just to make sure it's clear that Class 1 e-bikes are allowed on the Creek Walk Trail, like every, like, like they're currently allowed now. Then the second question is, do you want to actually change that to allow all Class 2 e-bikes?
Jeff, do you want to give an explanation of where Class 1 and Class 2 is, or Dylan?
Yeah. So, in the definition section of this proposed ordinance, it actually breaks out what the differences between those classes. Class 1, let's see, is an electric-assisted bicycle equipped with a motor that provides assistance only when the rider is pedaling and that ceases to provide assistance when the bicycle reaches a speed of 20 miles per hour. Class 2 is an electric-assisted bicycle equipped with a motor that provides assistance regardless of whether the rider is pedaling, but ceases to provide assistance when the bicycle reaches a speed of 20 miles an hour.
And Dylan, can you tell them where the Creek Walk would be that's also a sidewalk? So that they know what section that is?
So, this is, this is in the micro-mobility ordinance. Basically, it doesn't make mention of Creek Walk yet. But in ordinance 0818, where it allows Class 1 e-bikes on the trail, it doesn't look like it's restricted on any particular section of the trail.
I believe that was part of the reason why we didn't specify Creek Walk because it is so broadly defined in the existing ordinance. So, if we did move forward on allowing it on Creek Walk, we may, we may want to, when we update the Creek Walk ordinance, give that some consideration at that time.
Did you call me?
Yeah, yeah, Counselor Wolf, yeah. Go ahead. Go ahead, Julie.
Oh, I was just gonna say, I, based on Jeff's explanation, it does seem goofy to allow Class 1 bikes on Creek Walk as long as you didn't get it from the rental company. I mean, that just, that seems so random. Unless we're trying to reduce the number of these vehicles on the Creek Walk, because it, it does sound a little creepy about having some vehicle zoom by me at 20 miles an hour if I'm just walking down, walking down a little sidewalk there. But be that as it may, I would move to amend the, if we're allowed to amend on second reading, I guess we just did it. So, to amend this ordinance, I don't have the number in front of me, to include Creek Walk is number 13 under 81.91.070, Section 13C, and then moving what we now have as 13 into number 14. So, that would be my motion to make the Creek Walk situation more consistent.
Second?
And that's, okay.
And just to clarify, you're, you're basically saying we should allow the Class 1 e-bikes, just like any other Class 1 e-bike on the Creek Walk Trail. You're not saying we should upgrade to allow Class 2 bikes on the Creek Side, Creek Walk?
I thought about that, but then I thought, you know, there is a distinction since the Class 2, you don't even have to be pedaling. And I just thought, maybe we don't want too many bikes on the sidewalk there on the Creek Walk? But I don't know. I, I mean, I don't have strong feelings about that one way or the other. I'd be really interested to hear what other people suggest.
Mayor Protem?
Yeah, and perhaps I misunderstood the motion that I just seconded because I thought, Julie, that you were moving to approve 1320, but amending it to allow Class 1 and Class 2 e-bikes on the Creek Walk Trail. And to add Creek Walk to the list on 1891070C.
Yeah, I, I am comfortable doing that. So, that would be my, that would be my motion, whether I said it accurately the first time or not. Thank you.
Okay, so this, I'm not trying to make this difficult, just trying to make sure I got all this covered because right now you have the micro-mobility ordinance in front of you. And you don't have an ordinance that actually changes the Creek Walk Trail regulations to allow Class 2 e-bikes. So, I just, it's a little, we can amend the micro-mobility ordinance with the, with the concept that we're going to now allow Class 2 e-bikes. And we bring you back another ordinance that would do that at your next meeting. So, they're all consistent.
That's a good point, Jeff. And I'm sorry, I wasn't thinking. I would, I think that that's a better option is to simply approve this ordinance, 1320, by adding Creek Walk to the list that's already existing and then bring the e-bike ordinance back at another time as opposed to just messing with the micro-mobility ordinance.
Okay, yeah, that's good. I think there's, there's some, if you, if you take a look, not to make this more complicated, if you take a look at 1891070A, the way that's written, it basically reads like they're all micro-mobility vehicles, which are really just the e-bikes that are permitted, Class 1 and 2, are prohibited on all trails. So, I think if we want to make sure we're clear what's allowed, I would also add some language in there that makes it clear that e-bikes are allowed on the Creek Walk Trail as well as in subsection C, just so it's consistent. Because it reads like they're prohibited, and then you have this Creek Walk Trail there and it gets confusing. So, what I probably would say is accept that Class 1 and Class 2 electrical-assisted bicycles are permitted on the Creek Walk Trail. I mean, that clarifies that that's allowed. And then we'll bring you back the new ordinance to do that overall at your next meeting.
Okay. All righty. And, and, and before I forget, we do have to hold a public hearing too with this tonight. I think that City Clerk Morgan's tried to remind me to do that. So, if it's, I'll go ahead and call for that here pretty quick. Nancy, I see you've got your hand up.
Yeah. Now, I'm, I'm really confused, Jeff. I would like, I would prefer if we could approve this, 1320, this evening by simply adding the Creek Walk to the list. What, what's the best way to get this approved tonight without screwing with a lot of other ordinances?
I just, I guess my, we should probably be clear that their, their micro-mobility vehicles are permitted under the same terms and conditions as other micro-mobility ordinances on the Creek Walk Trail. So, I guess we could just leave, add it to C13. And then, really, one more thing here, or thing here. I guess I just like the idea of changing the language in subsection A because it's not going to be accurate if you don't change it. Because it says they're not-
Can you tell me that, can you tell me, tell us that side again, Jeff? Where's subsection A? What's that?
Oh, sorry. It's 1891070, which is the section-
On page 8 of the ordinance.
Yeah. And it's subsection A. Right. And the way it reads right now, it says, "Micro-mobility vehicles shall be prohibited from operation on sidewalks or pedestrian walkways within the city limits of the city of Manitou Springs per chapter 10.04." But chapter 10.04 allows them on the Creek Walk Trail if they're Class 1. And so it's not the way it's written right now.
So, we have, yeah, well, can't we just do a motion that amends two things instead of one and then we're home free? We can do that. We can do that tonight, Nancy. We can do that. Okay.
I guess what I'd ask for is council's, if we could go ahead and do the public hearing, I don't know that we'll have a whole lot of comments, but let's do that. Then we can come back and focus on what we really want to do here.
Okay. And we're at 14 minutes of a 15-minute item.
Oh, we'll have, we'll have to postpone it then.
We'll get her done tonight. Okay, that said, I will open the public hearing. Do we have anyone who, in the public who would like to speak to this?
Yes, Mayor, we do. We actually have two hands up right now. First one is Jill Gabler.
Okay, great. Okay, so if you, Judy, if you'd bring, bring her in, please.
Jill has just come over. So, Jill, address.
Good evening, council members. Can you hear me?
Yes.
Hi.
I, I hate saying that. My name is Jill Gabler and really just thank you for letting me speak. Mayor Graham, Mayor Protem, Miss Fortune, and rest of councilmen. I appreciate your time tonight. I, I serve on the city council in Colorado Springs and I've been listening to your last several meetings. I was a, a key council member to get Pike Ride started in our community and now serve as board chair of Pike Ride. And I'm really excited about the opportunity for Pike Ride to become a, a multi-jurisdictional entity that serves both Colorado Springs and Manitou to bring residents and tourists between our two cities. And I appreciate the conversation. I appreciate the, you're, you're trying to, to, to reduce the congestion in your, in your town and to find ways to create mobility options that can work for Manitou and be successful for Manitou Springs in the future. I've been listening to your conversation about Class 1 and Class 2 e-bikes and- I've been listening to your conversation about Class 1 and Class 2 e-bikes, and we do know Pike Ride is a Class 1 cycle, and we are excited to be part of that. I do, I, we are a little concerned about Class 2 because they do propel on their own, so I do think you need to be very thoughtful about protecting your pedestrians when it comes to, to Class 2, but I'm glad that you have waited to maybe visit that at another meeting. We may have time to focus on that tonight. I really just want to thank you for considering this. I really want to give a special shout out to your Mayor Protem, Nancy Fortune, who has been a really big cheerleader for micro mobility, and I think both of our cities are a lot better in trying to promote and safe, safe cycling for, for both of our communities, and being able to bring tourists between our two cities is going to be a huge boon for both of us, and I'm really excited. Today, I should let you know, it was my first time in, I don't know, five months now of hiking from Incline, so I want to thank you for opening, helping us to open that up, and I can see the opportunity for people to ride Pike Ride up Ruxton and then go hike into Incline, and that could be a really big benefit to your, to your tourists who certainly don't want to ride a manual bike up Ruxton. I know I don't, so I want to thank you. I know I'm coming up on my three minutes, but if you have any questions, or as you're going along, I'm, I'm here. Pike Ride has been a huge success in Colorado Springs. We created a permit that allowed any micro mobility to come in for, for bike share, and they have been the only ones to really meet our needs, and are really excited and I'm hopeful for the future of micro mobility in Colorado Springs, and we hope to have Manitou as a great partner. So thank you.
Thank you. And, Director, can we get your address, please?
Oh, sorry, yes. 1828 North Royer Street in Colorado Springs.
Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Gabler. Great. And let's see, Judy, we have another.
We, we do.
Individual, okay.
Speaker is Alan Delwich, and here he comes.
Okay, great.
Hi, I'm Alan Delwich. I reside at 210 Veal into Vista, and I am a frequent user of the Creek Walk Trail. I walk it almost every day, and I also am a, I'm a huge advocate for biking. I think bicycles are great. I'm kind of wary about having a great influx of e-bikes on the trail, especially the, the route, the path between the pool and the chamber. It's gravel. It's a terrible road. I think you're opening up the city to a lot of potential litigation. It's, it's not an even surface, and I would recommend that if you're going to allow a great influx of e-bikes on the Creek Walk Trail, especially in that part, but really in general, you might consider having a speed limit. It's terrifying to have someone go by you at 20 miles an hour on that narrow little path, and just a food for thought. And, you know, I apologize, we're going over 15 minutes, but it's not a basketball game, so we'll get over it. And really, you know, we really need to be cautious about what we're doing. It's, a lot of people walk their dogs. They, you know, little kids walk along there, and to all of a sudden have a lot of traffic, out-of-state people, tourists, renting e-bikes and thinking they have the right of way is terrifying. If you've ever been in Austin with the e-scooters, you'll know what I'm talking about. Thank you.
And we have another hand that went up, and that is Natalie.
So, okay, all righty.
Hello, can you hear me?
Yes.
Hello, this is Natalie Johnson, 22 Taos Place, and I just wanted to mention, in addition to Alan's comment, I just wanted to mention that in the Creek Walk master plan, there are portions of the trail that when it comes to bikes will deviate from a portion of the trail for safety, so that that has been taken into account. So I just wanted to mention that. Thank you.
Go ahead.
I think that was everything. Sorry.
Hang on, Natalie, I think Councilor Wolf has a question she may not have heard at all.
Oh, sure.
Julie, did you have a question?
Hi Natalie, hi Natalie, I'm trying to figure out what you just said. So are you saying that portions of the Creek Walk, particularly the gravel part that's not paved and it's really narrow that Alan Delwich just referred to, that that's not officially part of the Creek Walk that currently allows Class 1 e-bikes?
I just know that when we, when we were designing the Creek Walk Trail, we took into account areas where it would be dangerous or more, potentially more dangerous to pedestrians, and also safer for bicyclists as well. So the Creek Walk isn't a standard Creek Walk as we would understand it to be. It's a special Manitou version that will accommodate bikes and pedestrians all the way through. We felt that was very important, for it to be safe for bicyclists and, and for pedestrians, and so the, the master plan does accommodate for that.
So the master plan, you're saying the master plan has indicated that there are parts of the Creek Walk that should not have e-bikes because they're so narrow?
Well, so, so, yes and, so yes and no. So, so the idea is that we are going to build a safe Creek Walk Trail in Manitou that will support bikes and pedestrians. So in areas that it's not safe for pedestrians and bicyclists to be together, we're not going to, you know, we will, we will make that safe. So the plan is, is, is not going to probably be what we think of as a standard Creek Walk Trail. It's going to be a Manitou version that is safe for bicyclists and pedestrians.
And the Manitou version means it's really nar- narrow and it's gravelly, and all the gravel's gonna fly up and hit you when you're walking down the street if a bike next to you comes rolling down the hill at 20 miles an hour. Is that the part that makes it a Manitou version? I don't get what you're saying.
No, I think it's just a Manitou version in that it's not going to be a really straightforward 20-foot trail all the way through town, that at various points, we're going to direct bicyclists off the trail and then back on the trail as it is safe.
Oh, so if you are the one directing the bicyclist to get off the trail at certain parts, we need to know about that before we add Creek Walk to this ordinance, don't you think? Or that's what I'm thinking, if I am tracking you clearly.
Yeah, I don't, I don't think you're understanding me correctly. So I just want you to know that the master plan that was approved by council did account for this. That we did, we, we accounted for the fact that there are narrow gravelly areas and that it would not be safe for a bike and a person to be right next to each other, that that has already been designed for.
So the master plan accounted for, the master plan accounted for it, but it's not accounted for in this ordinance? That's what I'm hearing you say. I mean, that's the problem, right? The master plan expected us to get bikes off the path at the portion of the path where it gets really narrow and not appropriate for bikes and pedestrians to be next to each other, but this ordinance wouldn't incorporate that if we just simply add Creek Walk Trail today.
I, I do think that, it depends on whether we're talking about tomorrow or two years from now, but the two years from now conversation is that we do have a plan. I, I do believe that you're right. If we were to allow e-bikes tomorrow, there are portions of the, of the trail that we would probably advise against, but luckily we have technology and signage to support that.
A couple of other people I think can speak to this, to these questions here. First was Mayor Protem, and then Counselor Chandler will, will follow.
If I can make a suggestion that will, I think, hopefully solve this, that we amend, as Julie suggested, to add Creek Walk Trail, but amend that language to say the Class 1 sections of the Creek Walk Trail. A Class 1 is a term of art for trails, and it's a low-risk hike on a well-marked trail. It's usually not much elevation, usually not gravel. It's often paved. So that, that might solve it. It would also take us into the future. As more and more portions of the Creek Walk Trail are developed, it would allow us to account for those. So we could just say in C13, the Class 1 sections of the Creek Walk Trail.
Thank you, Mayor Protem. I said I'd call in Counselor Chandler next, and then Mr. Parker has comments as well, so Counselor Chandler?
Well, a couple of things. So the Creek Walk Trail is going to be completed in phases, and so, so these phases, so it's going to take several years before the Creek Walk Trail is completed. And so I, I do understand, we heard from Alan Delwich, who had some concerns about the people who walk. I walk in that section almost every day as well. But if, if we, if we were to approve only Class 1 bikes and not Class 2, I, first of all, I don't know how we can enforce that. And also, but I do, I do understand the concern about, in the short term, before the Creek Walk is finished, do, you know, how, how many bikes are too many bikes? And so I'm very pro-bike. I think that eliminating a one class over another would be too hard to enforce. And I agree with Mayor Protem Fortune that with the appropriate signage, that we give it a whirl to, to make those amendments in, in this and to approve both Class 1 and 2 bikes.
Mr. Parker wanted to speak. Thanks. I have a suggestion for your language. It'll give you some flexibility as things develop over time. I mean, you could change the language to say designated portions of the Creek Walk Trail. So then you can signage them as you need. As things get developed, you could change the signage. They're basically going to be allowed on the designated portions, and then you can designate them as you think's appropriate. And then for the earlier subsection A, so you can decide if you want to allow Class 1 or Class 2 on the Creek Walk Trail at some later point, whenever you want that to be, it could basically just read that, "Micro mobility vehicles shall be subject to the city's regulations governing their use and operation on sidewalks and pedestrian walkways." And then whatever you make those regulations to be, which are currently, the Class 1s are allowed, then that'll apply. You don't need to basically call it out and have to change different parts of your code all the time. That would be my suggestion.
Since we are still on the public hearing portion of this, this item, I guess I would like to check with Judy and see if there's anyone else in the audience who wants to speak.
At this time, there are no other hands that are being raised.
Okay, in that case, I'll go ahead and close the public hearing portion of this meeting. We'll go ahead and continue with our discussion.
We're at 29 minutes.
I'm withdrawing my motion. I don't want the friendly amendment about Creek Walk. I think it's premature. It's asking for trouble. I've been educated more about the issues. I understand it better now, so I would move to approve the resolution as, or the ordinance as written, but I, I'm no longer comfortable with the adding Creek Walk as number 13, so I withdraw that motion.
Can't hear you, John.
I'm sorry. And who had seconded the original, Julie's original motion? You had?
Nancy.
I had, and I, I want to go with the language that Jeff just offered to us. I think that that meets all the needs. Because I think we've already got an ordinance that allows e-bikes on the completed, the completed portions of the Creek Walk Trail.
It seems to be like we have two flavors now. We have Julie proposing that we go with the ordinance as written, and Nancy going with the idea that Mr. Parker can make some, well, the modifications that he just spoke to. So I guess I will ask, is there a, relative to Julie Wolf's motion, is there a second? Yeah, apparently not.
I think, I think I withdrew my motion, but I'm happy to make a new one. There's no motion for me. I withdrew it.
Sorry, okay. My apologies.
Motion. I would like to move that we approve ordinance number 1320 amended with the language that Jeff Parker just submitted on the geofencing requirements.
I'll second that.
Mr. Shada?
Yes, I second that.
Okay, so we motion a second. Do we have any further discussion? Mr. Parker, could you just briefly restate the amendments that would be going in?
Sure, it would be to 070, subsection A would now read, "Micro mobility vehicles shall be subject to the city's regulations governing their use and operation on sidewalks and pedestrian walkways within the city limits of the city of Manitou Springs." And then we would basically add a new subsection 13 to, to just move the other ones down. It would basically be designated portions of the Creek Walk Trail in subsection D or C, sorry. I'm losing my, I'm sorry, I'm losing my.
C.
C, thank you.
Want to continue the discussion here? Julie?
Oh, can I, I guess I need clarification. The designated sections, Jeff, of that language you just read, the designated section? Designated, is that equivalent to saying the paved-only sections that are wide, that Nancy was referring to?
You know, my, my thought would be, is it'd be equivalent to whatever the city signage says, or how the city designates it over time?
And.
Sorry.
If we, if we pass this now and we don't get signs up for a year, then people just go on any part of the Creek Walk they want until we have signs directing them off. Is that?
Right now, that's permitted. Right, right now, your code allows Class 1s on the Creek Walk Trail. There's nothing else in the current code. You may want to think about changing that too, frankly.
Yes, we have, we have no sign. I mean, signs could take six months. We have no sign. So if we pass this today and we use the language you suggested about on the designated portions of Creek Walk, I guess the average reader of this ordinance would assume that means the whole Creek Walk, unless and until we get signs telling you to get off. Am I following you correctly?
That's a good point. I think we have that problem right now with the current, current version of the code. We probably want to clarify that too. So if, we could certainly add some language, you know, describing what the designated portions are. I, I guess I.
Because right, right now, the whole thing is designated, right? Like without a sign, designated means the whole thing?
Yeah, right now. Yeah, right now, it just says e-bikes are allowed on the Creek Walk Trail, Class 1 e-bikes.
The whole thing?
Yeah.
That's, that's the problem in terms of safety, and that's a liability for the city. So let me just ask you, if I sue the city because I fall off my bike from going around a little curve when all the gravel's flying around, can I sue the city for not paving that section because the city knew or should have known that that, of course, is going to be dangerous?
Possibly.
Jeff, I would just like to say that I believe that the ordinance on the e-bikes in general designates Class 1 trails only.
I think I have that in front of me, to make sure I'm not missing it, but I've got it right here. And we, we can use that language, Class 1 Trails, to be more clear. I'm not, I'm certainly not advocating against that, I guess. I guess I hadn't realized there were no designations in place now, and that there were no plans for them anytime soon. So let me just take a look here. I've got it right here. Current ordinance. Now, I mean, the version I've got here just says that Class 1 electrical assisted bicycles are permitted on the Creek Walk Trail.
Okay, because I, I realize now what's, yeah, never mind.
So if we, so if we all vote yes on the motion that's on the. So if we, so if we all vote yes on the motion that's on the floor, that means that all electric, all e-bikes, Class 1 and 2, can be on the entirety of the Creek Walk right now, before we do any more signage, or paving, or any other improvements, the whole thing is fair game for all the bikes?
It's Class 1, Jeff?
It would only be Class 1.
Only Class 1?
I think what we probably.
You can't enforce that.
And micro-mobility, separate out micro-mobility ordinance from just anyone having an e-bike, too, this is a micro-mobility ordinance.
I mean, we, we could look at revising the general restrictions, which are currently in place. All I'm suggesting we say is that they're permitted pursuant to the current rules and regulations of this ordinance, that's really all we're doing. And then we can go and change the current rules and regulations that apply. Because I think that it would be, it seems like if we just, if we try and change this ordinance to specify the locations, we still have the general ordinance that allows them anyways. So why not make this ordinance comply with the current laws, and then change the current laws as you think is fit, that applies to all e-bikes on the Creek Walk Trail? And we, we would go back and make those revisions based on what you think's appropriate.
We're at 37 minutes.
Okay. Yeah, I'd like to, I'd like to get this, this moved along. Christine had a comment, so. Christine?
I agree with what Jeff just said. You know, I think something important to remember as we're going through this is that this is, this is establishing a pilot program, right? So we're looking at the course of, of one year, this is a pilot program. So if we feel like, we're going to learn a lot over the next six months, like, once this gets started, and we have a vendor come in, whether it's Pike Ride or someone else, we're going to learn a lot, especially in the first six months of operation, and that takes us, you know, that'll take us into next year. An option could be to not include Creek Walk, not to further muddy the waters, but we could, it is, it did seem rather arbitrary, and that's how we came up with even mentioning, you know, should we include Creek Walk in this discussion tonight? But, but that is something to, to keep in mind, this, this is creating the pilot program, and we can modify it, and, you know, we'll certainly be visiting this again in just a matter of months.
Great, thank you. Well, we do have a motion a second, we've talked about this, I think we should move towards a vote fairly soon.
Can I, can I just? I just want clarification of what motion is now on the table, because I am thinking about voting against this if it includes the Creek Walk now, because I really do feel that there are now some significant issues with that. I love the micro-mobility ordinance, but could you rephrase the motion that's currently on the table? Yeah, I moved that we approve ordinance number 1320 with the changed language as proposed by our city attorney on 1891070 A and C. And Jeff would have to redo the language, or re-say the language?
Basically, yeah, A basically subjects the use of the pedestrian walkways and sidewalks to the rules that are currently in place, which currently allow Class 1 e-bikes on the Creek Walk Trail. And then the change to subsection C basically says designated portions of the Creek Walk Trail.
I, I am for changing A, and I am not for, I'm against adding a Creek Walk at this time, because as Christine Lowenberg so eloquently said, this is a pilot program, and I'd rather add it later than add it now and, and be sorry that we, we did that now. I think we can easily add it later, the Creek Walk portion.
So is that a motion, Judith?
There's a, there's a motion and a second on the floor already.
Yes, we do.
Okay, so I can't, I can't make a friendly amendment to the motion that's on the floor? Yeah, you, you can ask for one. Okay, so I would, can I do that right? I will choose at this point not to, to take it to a vote as I stated it. Okay, so now I'm confused, I heard, I heard, I heard I can make a friendly amendment, and then? Right, and the person who made the motion is allowed to either accept the friendly amendment or decline it, so I'm declining it at this point. Okay, got it, okay, I hear, okay, I got it.
On the second stand. Okay, motion second stand.
Got it.
Okay.
Thank you.
All right. Okay. It appears there's no further discussion, I don't see hands being raised, so let's go ahead and move to a vote so that we have the motion as written with the modifications as proposed in the language by Mr. Parker. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Okay, so we have five, and all opposed, say nay. So we have, motion passes five to two, with Councillors Chandler and Wolf voting nay. Good, thank you. Would anyone be in favor of a 10-minute break right now? What do we want to push on? Looks like the intent is to push on. Okay, so, all right. Christine, Mr. Parker, thank you all. New business, consideration of resolution number 2820, a resolution adopting an updated universal fee schedule. Walk us through this. Here comes Becca.
Hello. So all our fees are in a universal fee schedule, which we tend to update once a year around November, when we are also looking at the, the proposed budget for the next year. But every now and then, new fees are suggested, and at that point, we then go ahead and bring that universal fee schedule before City Council in order to approve by resolution these new additional fees that didn't exist before. And in this case, I apparently loaded up two fee schedules, one with the new fees related to allowing micro-mobility share services and micro-mobility businesses or operation, there's a couple of new fees associated with that. And then I also loaded up a fee schedule having to deal with new parking that'll be brought forward in the future to City Council, but it's still not entirely ready to be brought forward, and plus, the fees might change, there's, it's not ready. But apparently, I wanted to give you guys a preliminary look at how staff is thinking, so that you won't be so surprised when it is brought forward to. So Judy has gone ahead and removed that one, because that is not on the table tonight, and we are back to just the, the three new fees for the micro-mobility project. And there's a fee for, they're on page 25, and I apologize for the ringing phone, they are on page 25 of the universal fee schedule, under planning fees. And one is for a micro-mobility program license fee, and it's $3,000, and that includes up to seven hours of monthly managing the program and the initial permitting of an operator. So it involves costs because of planning code enforcement and the police department. And then there's a land rental fee for equipment installed on city-owned property or right-of-way of $200. Then finally, there's just technology and or professional fees associated with review, and that's just going to be at the cost incurred by the city. So all of these fees, the three new fees, are on page 25 of the universal fee schedule, and nothing else is changing at this time.
Anybody have questions for Becca? Counselor Wolf?
What's per facility mean, Becca?
Park facility? Wait a minute, where is that?
Per facility, land rental is 200 per facility. What's a facility in that context?
What I'm assuming this means, it's for the, those bike racks that they install, so that you're, you've rented a bike, and you're pedaling along, and you're, you're tired of it now, and you want to get rid of it, oh, there it is, I, I go ahead and park it in this bike rack.
Docking station.
Docking station, excuse me. So we're going to be allowing them to, whoever comes in and establishes this, these services to have these docking stations on, apparently on city-owned property.
Thank you.
May I have a question, Becca?
Sure.
So I, I'm just curious, what informed the decision for the particular fee amounts of 3,200? Is, are those just the average fees that are typically charged in municipalities that have this sort of thing?
The planning department took a, a study of what all might be involved in this licensing fee to establish this new activity, and I believe they approached the other departments and said, what do you see in terms of man-hours? And that's how they established the fee. The, the idea with a fee is, it's, it's not so much to make money as to reimburse the city for the cost of it being incurred.
Exactly. So thank you, you answered my question, appreciate it.
Okay, if not, could entertain a motion to adopt the, the resolution? Okay, Mayor Potem?
Sure, I move we approve resolution number 2820, resolution adopting a universal fee schedule, changes being specific for the micro-mobility implementation ordinance. Second?
Question? If not, to vote, all in favor, say aye. Aye? Motion passes unanimously.
Thank you.
Thank you, thank you, Becca. Okay, next item, H2, introduction of council code of conduct development, and I believe we have Wendell Pryor to come in and brief us on this. Judy?
Yes.
Do you have Mr. Pryor?
Just a moment, I will move him over. Okay, here he comes.
Wendell, you are on mute. Wendell, you are on mute. Can you hear?
Can you hear me now?
Yeah, we can hear you, Wendell. Okay.
Thank you. And in the interest of time, I'm going to be brief and just respond to any questions. Is Jeff Parker still on yet? Jeff still there? Hello, Jeff, how are you?
I'm good, Wendell, how about you? Good to see you.
Good. Jeff and I know each other from our times with the town of Unavista, we've had a couple of issues to deal with, right, Jeff?
Easy to resolve, though, no problem.
Absolutely. So anyway, I'm, I'm Wendell Pryor, I'm happy to be asked to be a part of your effort from what I was initially contacted to do, and that is possibly some training, and then more recently, I believe, Mayor Graham reached out through Denise to ask if I could facilitate, at this point, what I'm kind of viewing as a conversation leading to adoption of the codes of conduct. So I believe I'm scheduled next week to be on your agenda to discuss, you know, codes of conduct, and hopefully get some resolution, if not adoption, of the codes of conduct. I came to you by way of Counselor Wolf, who initially reached out to the Graduate School of Public Affairs in Denver, C, Colorado, CU Graduate School of Public Affairs in Denver, to talk about some possible training related to bias, I believe that was over a month ago, and I've subsequently met with Denise, and more recently, last week, when I was in to do an assessment with Mayor Graham. So I'm just honored to be invited to participate, and glad to get to know all of you. Our kind of getaway place is Colorado Springs and the greater Colorado Springs area, I was telling somebody the other day, we usually start at Antlers and kind of work our way west through old Colorado City and then to Manitou Springs. So you've got a great community, and I'm glad to get to know some of the players. Mayor Graham or Denise, have you shared my bio with people, so they know who I am a little bit?
Yes, I did forward that to the rest of council.
Okay.
Yeah.
So I've got about, I'm, actually, it doesn't seem this way, but I'm in my 48th year, if you will, of what I consider public service, about two-thirds of that is state and local government in Colorado and California, and then another third in the nonprofit world associated in some way with state and local government. Currently, the executive director of the Chaffee County Economic Development Corporation, I have one of the worst-kept secrets in that I'm going to entertain my third retirement at the end of the year, but I'm going to try and make that one permanent. You know, and I have some education in, in law degree from University of Denver College of Law, a master's degree in public administration from CU Boulder, and an undergraduate degree in Western State College. But like I said, I've been around a lot, and this whole issue of negotiation and facilitation is something I've also done throughout my career, primarily in labor negotiations, but also in some of the work I do now as Director of the Economic Development Corporation for the county. So let me just stop there and entertain any questions, and then perhaps, Mayor Graham, you can kind of tee up what you want my role to be, and it's whatever you want it to be, and if you want me to just go away, I'm happy to do that, too. So happy to answer any questions, or entertain any thoughts people have.
Wendell, you had, I believe, recommended a book for us to, it's kind of a workbook or a resource, Denise has ordered copies of those books, we should have them here, I think by the end of the week. If you could give us the, the title, I think I was a little perplexed by the, the title, and then how that ties to a code of conduct, so if you could explain how that links to a code of conduct, I would appreciate it.
Sure. So I reviewed the materials that Denise sent me that you've worked on, I understand you've worked with a facilitator since the beginning of the year, and there's a lot of material and information there, up to it, including something I assumed you've calendared for discussion, and that is about a page and three or four sentences of a code of conduct. So I looked through the material and suggested to Denise that, you know, I don't need to create any more content for you, I see what you've gotten is pretty straightforward. I've had a lot of what I call ethics training in the boards and commissions that I've served on, and so what I understand my charge was in this regard, because my initial contract talked about training, doing a training needs assessment and offering some training to city employees, but in this particular case, it was to facilitate a discussion leading to adoption of the codes of, the code of conduct. So I'm here to understand from you what role you do want me to play, but the book, to me, is something that I'd recommend to any group or individual or body that's trying to deal with, you know, complex and maybe, you know, difficult negotiation, and it just seemed to me that this concept of principal negotiations coming from the book was a framework that we could use, as opposed to me trying to start from scratch and reinvent the wheel, so to speak. And, as I would say to my students, and as I would say to any governmental official, it's just one of those books that you may want to have on your bookshelf, because it talks a lot about interacting with folks, and you guys do a lot of negotiation, you know, as part of your job. So I just offered that as a framework for our discussion next week, and open to any and all suggestions, or, or if you even need it. But that's, that's what, the framework that I'm offering in the book is fairly inexpensive, and one of those primers that's been around for a while. And just to close, I'm, I'm familiar with it because, and I'm giving away my age a little bit, but the Harvard Negotiation Project initiated this approach to interacting with situations that involve negotiations back in the early 80s, and I was one of the first students of their work, it was a week-long training session. of their work. It was a week-long training session going back then, and I've used it, like I said, throughout my career. You know, I don't think it'll hurt you. If anything, I think some of the principles of the book, which are fairly straightforward, are useful throughout just daily life. And I know Counselor Wolf and Jeff are attorneys, and I'm sure you've run across it in terms of trying to reach settlements in lieu of litigation. So it's a well-known and well-established approach, and that's just my framework, Mayor, that I suggested in terms of trying to be creative. But again, if you want to save yourself a couple of bucks, you can put it on the agenda for next Wednesday to adopt, you know, without me saying a word. But I've been around local government, like I said, for quite a number of years and been in some contentious meetings. You all seem to be fairly straightforward in your approach to managing a great city. So I'm just here to help and listen and then respond and offer you the benefit of my experience.
What is your expectation of us next week?
First of all, that I would say this, and I'm a pretty straightforward guy at this point, especially at this point in my life, you know. I would do two things. Number one, let's put it on the agenda for adoption, and then see if we can get to some point of adopting it. If you're not comfortable doing this, doing that, then tell me what the problem or the issue is in adopting it, because I'm not, I'm not seeing it. There's nothing in what I've read in the code of conduct that is unfamiliar to me. As I mentioned to Denise, and I currently serve on several boards and commissions at the state level, we annually are required to go through ethics training that includes, you know, training on conflicts of interest from the state attorney general's office. I can't recall if we have a code of conduct per se, but certainly there are topics that are covered that we're required to undergo training in that are similar to, you know, codes of conduct. So, you know, my ultimate goal is to get you to yes. You know, we want this code of conduct, because I don't see anything in the code of conduct that comes out to me that, you know, forestalls its adoption. And maybe I'm missing something, and pardon me for being, you know, blunt about it. So that's why I want to listen and hear what people have to say and see if I can resolve any of the issues that you have. And this framework of principal negotiations, I think, is one of probably many frameworks that we could use, but I'm just offering that as a suggestion. So that was, that was the approach. I don't want to invent any more, I don't want to recommend any more language. I don't want to come up with any more codes. I kind of want to understand from where you've come from and where you're at now, what's the issue in adopting it? Because you've got a lot of things to think about in this environment, this Corona environment. Go ahead. I'm sorry.
John, you're muted. You're muted.
I can't hear you, John.
You can't?
No.
No?
No.
No?
Yes.
You have to just lean forward a bit. I think when you're not close to your microphone, it doesn't pick you up.
Okay. Maybe I've got, is that better?
Yes.
Okay, I'm sorry. I guess I had papers laying over the microphone. My bad. I was gonna say, does anyone in council have questions for Wendell? Yeah, they're not. Okay. Well, Wendell, if you think of any homework assignments for us, go ahead and send us an email.
Sure.
I do have the books that Wendell asked me to order, and it's called Getting to Yes. Some of you may have this. It's a very well-known negotiation book. But I ordered one for everybody. So if we can get everyone one of these, if you can stop by and pick it up, that's great. If not, email me and we'll figure out how to bring it to you. But I have one here that I know Wendell wanted everybody to at least peruse before next Tuesday.
Right. And if you want to skip to the key sections, it starts on about page 13. That's a good summary of the principles. And, you know, that's your homework. If you don't do anything else, bring the book to class, so to speak, or to the meeting, and peruse what's on number 13, and I'll have some questions that will, you know, kind of prompt some discussion. It might be helpful, too, to also review what Denise has sent me as the latest document on your codes of conduct. And again, Mayor, there are, you know, a lot of things to deal with and grapple with in this Corona environment. So I'm just hopeful of, hopeful of helping you get through it. And it turned my attention back to working with the city employees on training. We had a pretty really productive session last week in terms of needs assessment. I'll be meeting with Denise on Friday to review some of that content. But I'm just available to you for however you want to utilize my skills.
Thank you, Wendell.
All those items that Wendell mentioned were uploaded, so you guys have those. They are the, all the notes that you took at the retreat and then the draft one at one point. So those are uploaded. If you need something else, let us know, and Judy will make sure that it's uploaded or that we can send it to you.
Yeah. And are there any questions the council members want to pose to me so I can be prepared? You know, I'm happy to do my homework.
Wolf and then Counselor Chandler. Julie?
Hi, Wendell. This is Julie. I have a question. Process-wise, do you have any guidance for us on how to structure our conversation on this next time? And by that, I mean that as a general rule, we're required to speak a lot of time, speak for no more than three minutes, and then wait for each individual council member to also speak for three minutes. And so you can't have a conversation. You can't ask the person a question and then they answer, and then you ask a follow-up question. There's no opportunity to work through problems because we're not discussing. We're simply making three-minute speeches. And then, you know, seven people later, they come back and it's your turn again, which I find to be very difficult to work through issues with that kind of timed structure. Is there a particular structure that you can suggest for the group of us, seven people, that would be most cost-effective in terms of use of time, but allow us to actually talk with each other and not just make little speeches?
Well, from what I've observed this evening, you all seem to be doing a pretty good job of communicating with each other and, you know, problem-solving. I think, you know, an observation I have, and Jeff may want to comment on this, is that, you know, everything you do in the public domain, you're creating a record. And it's awful hard to track, you know, those free-flowing conversations as much as you would like. But I thought, you know, the agenda was laid out appropriately where there was opportunity for discussion. At some point, you need to take some action. But, you know, in the public sector, it's different than in a boardroom, because there are these requirements to create that public record for review. And frankly, I was pretty impressed this evening just listening to what you all, you know, had to struggle with, which is, you know, not a whole lot different than what I've observed in, you know, my five local governments and state government and the work that goes on there, even in the, even in the boards that I serve on. I'm a trustee, as some of you may know, in the Adam State University Trustee Board. And, you know, we're bound by those same constraints, you know, if you will. But I think your, the advice from your attorney in, in the process that you've laid out, looked fairly efficient and straightforward to me. And I'd be directing those kind of questions maybe over to Jeff to see if there's any more flexibility. But typically, somebody's got to run the meeting, somebody's got to bring the discussion to a close, if there's action required, somebody's got to make a motion, and there's got to be a vote. Otherwise, you know, there, it doesn't get resolved. So that's just my, based on my general experience. But I was pretty impressed tonight, I got to tell you.
Oh, it was much more loosey-goosey tonight. Usually, we have stricter rules, but tonight was very relaxed, and I think it was very productive. Yeah, thank you.
Counselor Chandler?
Hello, Wendell, and thank you so much for your positive comments on, on the council. I just wanted to remind everybody, and you, Wendell, as well, that when we first met with the facilitator and we're talking about a code of conduct, we were a brand-new council with a very different skill set that we, and experiences that we brought to the new council. There were three new at-large council members, including myself. And we also had a different Ward Three representative who has now, has since stepped down, and we have a new Ward Three person. So I've often commented that in the first just, you know, six to eight months of us being a new council, you know, we've dealt with some really complex issues. We have had a council member come on board, and of course, there's been a pandemic. So I just, I can't say enough amazing things about this council, because no matter what happens on a council night, I don't think I've ever seen a council member not prepared. This council comes prepared. From, as I recall, most of us were very happy with the original language in the code of conduct. I think there were some issues around the word enforcement or how to enforce it. And I, for one, had some questions regarding the chain of command. So, for example, of course, we'd want to deal with, if I have an issue with someone, of course, I'm going to try to deal with that issue with that person one-on-one. If that's not, if that's not appropriate or can't happen, my questions were around, well, what happens next? So, because we can't get three councilmen, I can't bring in another council person to say, let's, let's have three people talk about that, because that triggers the, the open meeting law, right? And for example, if my issue happens to be with the mayor, say, and, or he with me, and we can't work this out, who's the next, you know, what would be the next logical person that we would bring in as an arbiter? Would that be, you know, the city administrator or legal counselor, council, or, you know? So, so I think a lot of discussions before were largely not around the body of the code of conduct, but how we progress through a chain of command if we can't do a one-on-one resolution.
Yeah. Well, again, I think the book has some, I think it has a basic framework of working through conflicts. When I teach my conflict and dispute resolution course, this book is kind of a primer. There's another book that I've adapted some material from when I do my teaching called Difficult Conversations. But I think it's all about being respectful and wanting to be respected, you know, in your conversation. You know, I think that the public holds you to a higher standard in the sense that you're elected officials and you are the stewards of the public trust, but not only financially, but, you know, how, how a community goes about coping with the COVID epidemic, for example. So I think those situations that you described are hopefully the exception, you know, rather than the rule. And if we need to talk about that next week, I'll be prepared to, you know, utilize some of the material from the Different Difficult Conversations book. But that's, you know, you know, kind of all that I can offer, because I think the public does hold you to a higher standard to get through things and get things resolved and do it in a, in a civil way. And I was relating to Denise. Hey, I was there at the San Francisco Board of Supervisors and the Oakland City Council. So, you know, I've been to some raucous meetings. So, you know, this is fairly straightforward. And that's what I love about, what I love about local government is people take their roles, you know, very seriously. And if there are specific things that need to be resolved, those need to kind of go to the mayor, and the mayor can help hopefully be that arbiter, so to speak. That's why he's the mayor. And so I'm happy to, you know, help offer, you know, any thoughts and suggestions along those lines.
Thank you.
Woolbrook?
Thanks, everyone, and welcome, Wendell. I seem to recall that there were at least two council members who really felt that there, that this code of conduct that we had worked on was severely limiting their First Amendment rights when we talked about the difference between being a citizen and the difference between being a city councillor. And I don't want to get into that tonight, but I do want it as something that you look at. And certainly, you could email, I think, Jeff or anybody about what that conversation looked like. But it was part of the thing that held us up last time was this idea that as a city councillor, you're held to a separate standard and that your First Amendment rights are limited because of that sometimes, because of what happens on council. Thank you.
Yeah. Well, I think that as long as you're a city council person, and I, again, I don't know, Jeff, if council members take an oath, you know, when I worked for the city and county of San Francisco, even as a department head, you know, I took an oath of allegiance, you know, to the US Constitution, the state of California, you know, Constitution, et cetera. But I don't know if, you know, that's part of it. But you don't give up your, your rights, you know, so to speak, I wouldn't think. But again, I would defer to your town attorney on, the city attorney on that.
Yeah, yeah. And you take an oath, and you generally retain your First Amendment rights. You know, there's some rules that you can't, you know, reveal, things for executive sessions, et cetera. But Councilmember Woolbrook's referring to some lines that, you know, I actually may not have been deeply involved in, because I think a lot of this conversation about the code of conduct was taking, taking, taking place in work sessions, where I don't think I was that involved. But I'd be happy to weigh in. But, you know, generally, you retain most of your constitutional rights when you're a council member. In fact, I don't think you lose any. But, you know, you're privy to certain information that you have to basically address in a manner that's, I guess, reasonable. And, you know, I guess we're probably referring to some issues where everybody's supposed to be on the same page once a decision's made. And maybe there's another way to express that same concept, where people aren't giving up their rights to disagree in public with a decision that's made, but they're still moving forward as a body. I think that may be the issue you're referring to, Councilmember Woolbrook, where city council makes a decision, and then the concept is that they support that decision, where some council members may not agree with that decision that was made. And then how do they address that? I think that's one of the issues. And I think the answer generally is that council members are free to express their opinions as they, as they desire. But there's, there's the concept where, how do you let a decision be made that you don't agree with and still continue to work with the body and work forward with the entity to promote the best interests? Maybe that's what we're talking about here.
Yeah, and I've seen, I've been, you know, the odd person out on some of the boards and commissions that I served on. And if you want to, you know, make sure people are clear about, you know, your opposition to what's happening, you know, you can go on record and, and make a statement to that effect, but...
And be, do you have the protection?
Pardon me?
Susan, did you say something?
No, I did not.
I'm sorry. Okay. Sorry, Wendell?
So I guess what I'm saying is that, you know, once a decision is made, depending how strongly you might feel in opposition to it, you can certainly express that and make that, you know, part of the record. But the general understanding is, once a majority votes to go in a certain direction or on a decision, that as a body, you support that decision. And, you know, I tell people, and again, I'm just being blunt. I know the hour is getting late and that kind of thing. But, you know, I used to tell my staff, you know, that sometimes life is a matter of choice. And sometimes when the decision is made, you, you can accept it. Or if it's really something that, you know, bothers you, you know, you always have the other side of, you know, not being a part of the body. But from what I've seen tonight, you're a pretty good body and you're pretty articulate in your opinions. And, you know, you're doing a pretty good job, I think, of getting through what you need to, to get through in a work session. So I'm impressed with you, just as I was the, the staff that I interviewed.
Thank you. Thanks, Wendell. Well, it looks like we'll be working with you next week. So if you have any homework assignments for us, anything, send it to us the next day or two, so we have a chance to work on it.
Yeah. Get that book and at least review page 13.
Okay. Page 13. Okay.
That's the summary of the principles.
Great.
And then let me know, Mayor, if there's anybody wants to direct any specific questions following this meeting, so that I can have those and kind of be prepared.
Okay. I see. Mayor Protem, do you have a?
Yeah, John, I'm just going to suggest if anyone, exactly what Wendell just said, is if anyone has any questions or input they'd like to give to him prior to next week, they might...
might funnel it through you.
That'd be fine, yeah. Just go ahead, and if you've got a question, send it to me, and I will forward it on to Wendell, and then at some point, I guess, I'll send, you know, compile them and send it out to everybody. Okay, so we all have that. Okay, great. Thank you. Thank you very much, Wendell.
Okay. Thank you for having me.
Sure thing. Take care. Okay. Next item, Receiver Act on Council Correspondence. Would anyone like to go first? Counselor Woolbrook?
Yeah, I have two things. Sally Fitzgerald messaged me today concerning motor, you know, things with wheels on sidewalks. So she referenced things like scooters, skateboards, and wheelchairs. So, you know, we're really putting a lot more tables out to try to get people outside for COVID, and we have a fantastic skateboard shop in town. It's one of the only skateboard shops in Colorado Springs now, so it does bring a lot of skateboarders here, but this has kind of been an ongoing issue as long as I've lived here, which is that I believe we have an ordinance that says no bikes, no skateboards, and all these things on the street. It's not really being enforced, and I noticed it too, and I think with COVID, we're trying to say, you know, wow, if I'm skateboarding or I'm scootering, biking, socially distancing, and that's really great. But I understand this issue, and I wanted to report that to the rest of council. Don't know what the resolution is, but I think if we've been walking downtown, we've seen lots of wheels on the sidewalks during this time, as well as more tables. And then I also wanted to reference a note that came from Alan Delwich about some parking fees and some questions. I didn't want those to get lost, and I don't know where they need to be applied, but I'll leave that to those of you who form the agendas. I just don't want to lose those comments. They were good from someone who had, I've been on the transportation and parking board, and, you know, sometimes fines are so low that people don't feel the pressure to abide by the law, and that was really his point. And I think that what he said was well-spoken, and I think we ought to look at it at a time that it's appropriate. And I think that's all I have. Mayor, I don't know if we have a future agendas thing on here, but I do have one item for that before we end the meeting.
No, we don't. Now would be a good time to mention the...
Okay, I'll mention it now if it's okay with you. It's brief.
Sure, yeah.
There seems to be some friction about limiting the amount of time on an agenda, and I see it on Zoom because I can see all of you face-to-face. If I were sitting on the dais with you and not in Zoom, I wouldn't even see some of you as we talked about these things. You know, in the last meeting, in the last council that I was on, prior to this council, we, Nancy was sort of our timekeeper because we weren't adhering to time. We had meetings that went till midnight, and one of the big challenges we have is not only that for us, but it's that when we try to recruit people to run for council, they go, wow, you have meetings till midnight. Hmm, I don't think I really want to do that. And so we had went with this in the previous council. I don't think we've ever talked about it here, and Nancy was really good at being our timekeeper, and so she's kind of taken on that role, but I'm sensing some friction. And so what I'd like to have on a future agenda is for us to actually talk about and vote on whether we want time limits or not as a council, and let's just get this out, let's air it out, let's talk about it, let's have the community weigh in on it, on the agenda so that we can take that community feedback and bring it back in. At the very, one of the very last meetings of the previous council, we tried to talk about even putting some things in our charter and code about the length of meetings, and one of the things that Julie joked about tonight was, well, let's postpone it. If we're out of time, let's postpone. Okay? We can actually write into our, how we do our meetings, that that's how it works, but we all have to have a discussion about that. We have to rope the public into that. That's not the right word, but you know what I mean. We have to invite the public to have a conversation with us, and if that's how we want to do with our meetings when we hit our time limit and we go, we're nowhere near a decision, we move and roll it over, and what are the consequences of that? And Julie, that's just one example, but it reminded me, when you said that, it reminded me that we had tried to talk about this in a work session in the previous council, and it kind of went nowhere, but I'm really sensing some real friction, and there was friction in the last council. It wasn't something that everybody agreed on, that things should have time limits, and some people did, and some people didn't, but I kind of feel like we're at a point where we need to get this on an agenda, and we need to talk about it, and we need to come to some kind of majority decision about what we're going to do about it and understand the impacts of those decisions. Thanks for letting me talk about it, Mayor.
That's fine. That's a good point. And just to quickly add to that, I had asked Mayor Protem Fortune to keep time for me, and that was driven, I think, largely by the meeting we had that went, it was past 11:30. I think that involved the incline. It was quite an involved meeting, so that was part of my thinking there, but certainly we can, I'd be happy to discuss this with everyone else. Okay. Thank you, Susan. Would you like to go next? Any comments? Councilman Bremder, I think, Steve, you were next.
Yeah, I'd just like to comment. I've been going down the incline every day to see how the operations taking place, and I stood there as an observer. They didn't know who I was. I had my buff on. I just watched them and saw how they were interacting with people that came up to give their reservation, and they're very professional. They're asking them where they parked, and they're, you know, checking their reservation, and then they're giving them the wristband, and I also talked to some people that were using the incline and asked them what their experience was, how they liked it. And almost everybody I talked to likes it. They think it's a good deal. They like the fact that there's social distancing, and there's more space on the inclines, not as crowded, and they're happy with the experience and using the reservation system. So my impressions are it's been a success. And as I mentioned in the email, there was some problem with the incline friends, a person who was, I think, trying to, like, circumvent our system, trying to game the system, trying to send people up there when they didn't have a reservation, and I've addressed that with the president of the incline friends, and I think that's been resolved because I asked them today down there, basically the incline, if they had any problems today, and they hadn't had any problems. So that's all good. Regarding Alan Delwich, I had an email from him as well, in addition to what he'd said tonight, and he talked about oversized vehicles, trailers, RVs, parking down there on East El Paso Avenue is a problem, and he believes that the fines are too low. Right now, I think it's $35 for your second offense, it's $0 for your first offense, $35 for your second, and $45 for your third, and he doesn't think that's punitive enough because he thinks people are still, are just parking down there and just, you know, abusing the system. So that's the concern he brought up. That's all I've got.
Okay, thank you, Steve. Counselor Chandler, I think you were next.
Thank you. First of all, I just wanted to tell you that the Manitou Behavioral Health Group met. That name is just a placeholder, by the way. We'll be looking at a name change this week, this next week, but we had 16 participants meet last week, and since then, we've had even a number of new stakeholders willing to volunteer and want to get involved. We will be meeting this Thursday evening with the core group to discuss administrative and executive issues and funding it, et cetera, but it is really moving forward, and I'm so thrilled to report that. On the 24th, just want to say again that Amy Yarger of the Butterfly Pavilion will be here to go hiking with Melody Doherty of Manitou Pollinators, and Dylan and I, and hopefully Christine Lowenberg, so that'll be a nice day. I did want to give a shout out to Alex, our Public Information Officer. I just really appreciate those daily emails in my inbox if there's anything that, where Manitou is mentioned in the news, and I just, I just really appreciate that, so a shout out to Alex. And also, I do want to say thank you to the Planning Department. After seeing the issue of the RV park through the lens of Counselor Woolbrook's eyes, I do see that the Planning Department has been tough, so I'm teachable too, and I appreciate that. And lastly, I want to thank Counselor Woolbrook for bringing up the time limits issue. A good read of the room because I have been really frustrated. I would certainly rather limit a meeting time than limit everyone's individual time because, as I said to our guests tonight, we all come very prepared, and I think one of the reasons why it goes so late sometimes is we are prepared, and that's what the residents and the city wants of us. So I totally support that being on a future agenda. Thank you.
Mr. Shad, do you have anything?
I don't have anything.
Okay. Well, Counselor Woolbrook, I see you raised your hand again.
Yeah, I'm sorry. I forgot this earlier, and I'm sorry. I have had some technical difficulties tonight because, and I think this might be a good idea to maybe have our Public Information Officer refresh us on this policy, but I've had a drone hovering and buzzing me tonight in my backyard. So I think there's a drone policy, maybe it's an FAA policy. I don't know what it is, but this is the first time I've ever experienced this, and I don't know if we need to put a shout out on our social media about what that policy is, but I'm pretty sure, I'm hoping this isn't allowed, but my apologies for those moments where I wasn't doing so well.
Right. Thank you. Counselor Wolf, do you have anything?
No, but we can't hear you because you're too far away.
Okay, sorry. Okay, I'll try to do better. Okay, okay. But you didn't have any. Mayor Protem?
Yeah, Match had, was supposed to meet last Thursday, but had technical difficulties, so they're going to meet this Thursday instead. However, on Friday, a group of them, subset of them, did meet with the financial director from Steamboat Springs, who has a similar initiative there, and got some really great information. So that's all for now. Thank you.
Great, thank you. I have one thing that I think is kind of neat. Can, I hope you can hear me. I got a call last Friday from a woman in Wichita, Kansas. She and her husband had been here. They had mechanical problems with their RV, and they just had a nightmare trip out here, but it ended on a good note. She sent me a two-page, single-spaced typed letter. I just, we just want to let you know that although our vacation was not without incident, all the people we met in your city went out of their way to help a couple of tourists with a disabled motor home. Their kindness will not be forgotten. The whole experience left a very positive impression of your city with us. We will be eager to visit again, and we'll be sure to share our experiences in Manitou Springs with others. So you don't always get a nice note, and that's kind of a fun thing, so that's great.
Nice.
That's all I had that was worthy of mention, so I think we could go on to the city administrators' report.
Yeah, Mayor and City Council have a few items. Parking logic install is almost complete. It's charging, and we have the repeaters to put in. We should be able to get data, hopefully, going into this weekend of all the lot use and start getting occupancy rates. The Serpentine area, we've still had problems with parking, so over the weekend, the Public Works Crew and Park and Recreation went out and did some fire striping. We already got a lot of comments that it's already helped, and I talked to El Paso County, and they appreciate the help with that area with parking, so that was a lot of good work by the Public Works Department. Tomorrow, Dole and I will be meeting with Colorado Springs for the incline. We will be taking notes and recording it and making sure that council gets that information on the meeting. And then the last part is, Public Works is also working on getting a lot of the areas cleaned up. Ms. Howell asked them to start cleaning up around the signs, and there's a lot of overgrowth, so we are working on it. We cleaned up around the Garden of the Gods in El Paso stop sign and around the pool area right now down Creek Walk. So if you get a chance, take a look. It looks really good. So thank you very much.
Thank you. Denise?
Just a couple of things. We've sent out an email to you regarding C Click Fix. I hope you've downloaded that on your phone. It's a great app. It's, you can take a picture, send it in, it gets logged, you get a note saying it may be a week, two weeks, three weeks, maybe tomorrow, depending on what they do, so they take those, they prioritize them, and then Roy and I can look at them and see where they are and what's happening, and it's really working very well. We'll be putting out an article in the paper, I believe, and then a couple of hats in the paper, trying to get the community to really buy into this C Click Fix. It's very easy to use, so please, I hope you've used it. You can try it. You can, you know, if you see a trash can full, whatever, send it to us. It's a way to at least try it out. We've tried it, I've tried it for about three weeks now, and it really works, so I would encourage you to do that. Working with CSU regarding their gas lines and making sure that they do that before we do the pavement on the Manitou Avenue, so Manitou Avenue pavement is looking like it's September sometime. Met with Becca at the Arts District and with our Planning Department and our Public Works Department in looking at the park lets and how we might be able to make that happen. Lots of communities are doing it. We've met with Frisco, Breckenridge, others, so we're really seeing how we can try to make that happen this fall to try it out for a little bit. And then just continuing, I know Roy is working on parking and really working with that and what that looks like in the future. I did say maybe we might be bringing Plan Manitou to council, but I don't think that will happen on May 8, or not May 8, September 8. So we're looking at moving that back, just really looking at staffing levels and people with vacation and making sure that we can honor and bring a professional presentation. So those will be coming in time. Other than that, a lot of time with budgets in each department, their budget and what it looks like in forecast for next year and what that looks like. So that's what we've been spending a lot of... Oh, the other thing I do want to mention because of parking, thank you for sending me comments whenever you see them or whatever. I would encourage you to continue to do that. We are looking at really enhancing our parking enforcement. We are looking at bringing new parking, part-time parking people on, just finding it challenging right now to do that, but we will continue to advertise and see how quickly we can get them on to get our parking up to speed. So thank you. And Kevin Impatience is doing a phenomenal job with that. Roy, anything else you would talk about parking, because I know that that is especially along Ruxton, and we're really working at trying to enforce that as we do this?
Yeah, we were doing the parking logic, so that's why we were short-staffed on Sunday, but they're back up working, and we, Kevin told me they found two people. Looks like we want to bring two people in soon, so we will have more staff. It's hard to do it with just two, one the department head and one the enforcer. So they've been doing a good job, and the revenues will show that, but there'll be a couple of occasions where we have to shift our focus for a day or two, and we'll try to stay on it the best we can. And the only other thing about the parking or the fines, Ms. Woolbrook, we are, I am talking to parking, and we'll do that with the parking board. We are going to discuss the fines, and I do agree, they do have to be a penalty so that people know you can't do it, and if it's not, if it doesn't hurt a little bit, it's not going to do anything. So we'll be talking about that and try to fair, probably incremental-type system, but we'll, so, you know, because you have somebody who do it once, and it shouldn't be that hurtful, but as you keep violating rules, it should change. But we'll have, we'll get on that, so thank you for bringing that up.
And we'll probably be bringing that in November timeframe, whenever we bring all the fine updates. So like I said, we try to do that once a year, but we had to bring today's because we brought in a new ordinance, but we'll be looking at that in November with all the fine updates at that time. I encourage all of you to try the incline in the reservation system. It really is smooth.
Just one last thing. The shuttle, the incline shuttle will start on Monday. I did confirm that, Denise, and so it will be running.
Perfect. Thank you.
Yeah, John, I can never hear you when you start out, but I assume you called my name.
Oh, yes, I did.
Yeah, I forgot to mention council correspondence. I continue to get correspondence on the draining of Sutherland Creek, so I will work with you some more on that, but that issue's not going to die, and nor should it, because it's decreasing property values and very frustrating for those property owners along the creek. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. Well, the last item of business is adjournment, so if we have a motion. Anybody want to stay here all night or somebody? Okay, Julie, make the motion.
I moved to a turn.
Okay. You have a second?
Second.
All in favor, say aye. Okay, thank you all. Thanks much. Have a nice evening now.
Thank you. Thank you.